Good to go. Okay, thank you. Okay, good afternoon and welcome to council Monday, March 22, 2021. Called the meeting to order at 4:00 PM. As always, just remind everybody to turn off their other devices. They're not using it this time and then we can have a great meeting. Any additions or additions to the agenda? We have a couple add-ons. 12 A will be a D-SAB update from councillor Lake and 16 announcements. Councillor Valance give an update on library verbal announcement. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. I do have a motion here. Sorry.
The removal of the delegation.
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, we had a delegation today and it has been removed at the request of the individual requesting a delegation. So either at a different time or he'll discuss with administration some concerns. Thank you for that. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, March 22, 2021. Regime of council circulated or amended. Move by.
Councillor Lake.
Councillor Valance.
Thank you. Any questions, arrows or missions to that? Hearing none, all in favor? Could everybody say aye because they can't see anybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie. Any conflicts of interest today? Hearing none. I have a motion here that council hereby adopts the minutes of the regular meeting of council were held on Monday, March the 8th, 2021, and the closed meeting of council held on Monday, March the 8th, 2021 as circulated amended. Move by.
Councillor Valance.
Councillor Valance and councillor Jingra. Thank you. Any arrows or missions in those minutes that anybody noticed? No questions? Call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor? As noted, the delegation has removed into the verbal reports, a report on the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Skorchinsky.
Thanks, your worship. So just give an update to council on the latest situation with the respect to COVID in our community as well as an update with the vaccine rollout that was provided by the health unit today, but also the mayor and I can highlight a meeting amongst the district with the health unit last week with respect to the vaccine rollout and communication. So unfortunately, council seen that we did have a death today in our community as a result of COVID-related symptoms in our chronic care ward at our hospital. So unfortunate and certainly thoughts go out to the family members as well as those at NASH as I'm sure it's a difficult situation there. One new case added to our case total in Marathon today as of March 22, which brings us to seven active cases. And looking at the release from both NASH and the health team with that new case, there'll be a number of additional contact tracing completed to get a handle on that. And if there's any other contacts from that one additional case. So in total, seven cases here in Marathon, but NASH is certainly dealing with that situation. Well, I guess, you know, on the more positive side, the health unit did come out with the release today, which we discussed last week, that they're partnering with our family health teams in the district to roll out vaccines throughout the district community. So in Marathon, it's being quarterbacked by the Marathon family health team. And they came out with an announcement last week with respect to completing the phase one priority groups in Marathon over the coming three weeks and then rolling into the phase two priority groups as identified by the province through our health unit. So the positive thing is we are starting to see the vaccine in our community and our residents getting vaccinated. For those that haven't been done yet, and in some cases, it'll be their second dose, such as those residents at Peninsula Manor and in chronic care. And then just I'll turn it over to the mayor. Obviously, we still remain in the gray lockdown with respect to the provincial framework. The numbers from Thunder Bay have been trending in a more positive nature in the last few days and over the weekend. So hopefully those numbers continue to decline and we can see ourselves moving into at least the red control zone as we move into spring, which would allow us to open up some of our recreation facilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor if he wants to highlight the meeting that was held with all the district mayors last week and the CAOs.
Yes, thanks for that, Mr. Skorchinsky. So first off, let me share my condolences with the family of the individual that we lost to COVID-19. And again, as you mentioned, the all the staff and docs at Wilson Memorial, I'm here in Marathon through NASH, you know, it's something we didn't really want to have happen in our community. And we've done, we, as well as the health team and everybody in the community in the district, I believe, is doing the right thing. But things like this, they do land on your doorstep and it landed in our community. And, you know, tragically, it took an individual and hopefully that's where it stops and we don't lose anybody else. But condolences to her from our council to the family and friends of the individual that we lost. Yes, we did have a meeting Thursday of last week with Dr. DeMille and the mayors and CAOs in the Thunder Bay district. It was a very productive meeting. We got updated from the doctor in regards to the vaccines and it was more about communication and sharing the communication with her team and through the district. So everybody's on the same page. We weren't getting, you know, information from our board members. And not that we weren't, we were getting information from our board members, but it was one voice, one meeting, and we hope to have those as a follow-up each week. She did indicate that she had discussions with the province and identifying Thunder Bay as a hotspot. So the message left that meeting with both Mayor Morrow from Thunder Bay and myself and Mayor Landry from Shunia as president of Noma, we sent off a letter to the minister and to the premier to identify Thunder Bay as a hotspot in writing on paper rather than just verbally. And Dr. Mills did come out at lunch that day on Thursday and asked that the province also identify Thunder Bay in that method as a hotspot. She also indicated there was a thousand extra doses sent out to Thunder Bay because of the situation. And with that being said, she did indicate that she was going to look at all possibilities of getting the vaccine to the individuals or locations or parts of the community that were at higher risk for the spread of the COVID-19 in her base. So didn't relay any of that roadmap out, but did talk about identifying those. So that was great. And she did assure us that we would move forward this week with a meeting to discuss updates. So with the letters that were sent out to the premier and the minister of health Elliot, and with Dr. DeMille's support, hopefully we'll can see a constant flow of vaccines sent off to the district and specifically identifying the hotspots in Thunder Bay. And as Mr. Skorchinsky identified, knocking down the numbers so that we can at least get back to our community in a functioning way in our businesses and get back and hopefully get, you know, their doors open in the red zone area or better. So with that being said, it was, it was great. The communication is flowing and that's the key. And we can only hope that this message gets out as we shared all along is that be very cautious when you travel to Thunder Bay if you have to go for medical, specifically for medical or, you know, something that's an emergency of nature. But just to travel off to Thunder Bay right now is not recommended from this council and this administration team and as well as NASH. So please take care and don't, don't travel unless it's absolutely necessary. And according, we will, we'll get those numbers down into vaccines in the arms of people and we'll be good. Thanks for that. So with that being said, I think that's all. Anybody have any questions on that? I hear none. Okay.
Yeah, I had one, your worship.
Okay, I do see. Sorry, councillor Lake, I see your hand now. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
And I know this maybe isn't a question that, that came up or you could answer, but it's really exciting to see the vaccines, starting to see those first phase one, one folks getting vaccinated. Obviously, the more we get, the more we get closer to being back to normal. Was there any sense of when we're going to be moving into phase two and three and where we can have that sort of huge herd immunity number? Are we looking, you know, one month, two months, six months, a year? Was there any sense of, you know, like, when would you and I be able to get vaccinated as kind of that last group?
So, so Dr. DeMills did not mention any specific dates, but obviously that there was going to be a steady flow of vaccines coming through the district as we get closer to the end of this month. And of course, we all know that through the province of Ontario and of course, Canada, we'll start seeing huge amounts. As we heard, the Americans have shared 1.4 million extra doses that they don't, they haven't certified yesterday, extra genica vaccine that'll come to Canada. That'll be spread out throughout the country. And the procurement minister, as well as Minister of Health, Heidu said, have your units ready to be vaccinating people because these are doses that are something wasn't planned. So on top of the Pfizer and the Moderna, we will have that. So there was no specifics on that. At least I didn't hear any, and I don't think Mr. Skorchinsky can highlight if you did hear something differently. She talked about more vaccines coming. And of course, we're in our general population and speaking of us at council in our age group, we will probably be in the May, June, July area if best case scenario, if the vaccines come the way they say they're coming. And then hopefully, as our prime minister identified, we'll have all Canadians done and vaccinated, at least with a single shot by September of 2021. That's it. Councillor, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Oh, yeah, your worship, just a follow-up note to councillor Lake's question. One other thing that we did learn on the call last week is there are situations where there's leftover vaccine in some vials. And in those cases, they don't get discarded. There is a backup list that does get called to utilize the remaining vaccine that's still available in those vials. So the vaccines that arrive in the community are completely utilized for things like extra as well as no-shows. So if somebody has an appointment schedule, doesn't show up, there is a list so those persons utilize those vaccines that are in Marathon and they don't get stale dated.
Exactly. Anything else? I see councillor Valance, but you're good? Okay. So with that being said, we'll move on to the verbal report and update on the current 21 projects. Mr. Skorchinsky.
Thanks, your worship. So yeah, I guess some weeks it's hard to believe we're finishing quarter one for 2021. And some weeks, it seems that can't come fast enough. So good opportunity to highlight some projects that administration's working on, as well as a good chance for administration to reflect on some of the work that's taking place behind the scenes. So with respect to the golf course clubhouse, so construction on that build continues with electrical currently being installed. We went and completed a visual inspection on that last week. So a number of local contractors have been subcontractors on this job, as well as a number of local businesses being the product suppliers. So that's one of CGV's policies is to hire and supply locally as much as they possibly can. And we certainly see that with this project. So building handover is scheduled for early June, which is our contractual schedule. So that's, that's positive. And administration is working on the operating plan at the same time as the build takes place. With respect to our broadband project with T-Bay Talon Terrace Bay, so T-Bay Tal is currently working on the necessary engineering and permit applications for this project. Example, the permit application would be utilizing existing Hydro One Towers in the community rather installing new ones to have joint use. So initial construction in Marathon is slated to begin later this fall, and it's expected to be completed in two stages over this fall and likely ending next fall. With respect to our natural gas project with the four other North Shore communities, our project has submitted an application to the Ontario Natural Gas Expansion Fund. We are still waiting on that decision. The mayor and I have followed up a couple of times with Minister Walker's office to see where that rollout is going to happen. We don't have an update as of yet. So that's what's really holding us up in getting our required phase two application into the Ontario Energy Board, which we require for permission to start construction. So our original timeline to go to the OEB was March 2021. We're likely looking at more a May timeframe, doesn't fundamentally change our project schedule and our hope would be that construction would start in the spring of 2022, if we receive the necessary approvals. Pebble Beach, we've submitted two funding applications, one to Fedno or one to NOHFC. We expect those to be adjudicated likely this month. It's the year end for both those operations, March 31, 2021. Hopefully, we hear back positively and we can move to tender in 2021. Obviously, our component is included in the 2021 capital budget. And looking at waterfront development, this is more so the boat launch Cummings Beach Recreation Area, as well as Carden Cove. Through our EDO, we have applied to the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative through the federal government to develop a comprehensive waterfront development plan, which will focus on increased mobility and accessibility. So really, what we want to do is tie together our waterfront, the different components of it, so that it's accessible. Obviously, it won't happen overnight, but would likely be a five-year plan to do that. But in the interim, we expect to hear back on this application in May. For this year, down at the boat launch site, we'll be completing some dock rehabilitation that was docks that were damaged last year with some of the weather, but we'll be installing the docks this year, and that'll include all the docks. So last year with the onset of COVID, we didn't install the day use area where you're able to park your boats for the day. So those will be installed this year, along with the launch area. We'll be completing the fish cleaning station. We have our necessary approvals for both our gray water and our electrical for that building. So that's slated for next month. We're going to install the kayak dock permanently this year and make that a safe area to launch and land your kayaks, as well as we're going to complete some landscaping with the tug now removed. We're going to clean up that beach area and make it safe and as a recreation area, which will likely include some picnic tables and just an area to utilize Lake Superior. And we'll complete some new signage down at the site as well. With respect to the Active Living Centre, Infrastructure Canada just sent out an expression of interest recently for a new program they're looking to launch in 2021, which is called the Green and Inclusive Community Building Program. It's slated to be a $1.5 billion construction program. So we've submitted our expression of interest for our project. Obviously, it's a project that with council's direction through our strategic planning process, we're going to update this year and relook at. So we're prepared for an application to that program. Obviously, with the recent public announcement of generation mining moving ahead with their positive feasibility study, a lot of work, a lot of work is required by administration to prepare for that type of development. So we're obviously in contact with generation on a very regular basis. But the one item administration knows long before generation gets here is we need to look at our housing strategy and what those requirements might be. As we know, there is a housing shortage currently. So we have started that planning process in 2021 with relooking at infilling lots we have within the community existing, looking at some new multi-residential development, as well as dusting off the Penlake Heights subdivision and looking at the extension up in that area around the gullwing section, which would provide an additional probably 100 to 25, 100 to 50 new homes if we move forward with that. Thinking positively about recreation, the community services staff are working on a number of different programs. Hopefully, if we get into the red and eventually orange zones, so for this year, spring through fall, this would include day camps, reinstating a junior golf program, looking at organizing a T-ball and baseball league, which for those who've been around will recall was very popular in the past in Marathon. Looking at the potential of indoor soccer once again in the arena, utilizing that facility, as well as organizing a seniors walking program in the arena, as opposed to Lakeview, much easier to complete a lap and it's a little bigger space to do that in. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, if we get out of this gray framework, we're able to put some of those programs in place for the community to get active. And then the final project, which is slated for some work this year is the works garage. This has been in the capital budget for the last two years. We honestly just haven't gotten to it. But this year, the plan is to work on a financing strategy to bring forward to council and complete final engineering and design in 2021 to prepare us for a build in 2022's capital budget. So when the list, you look at the list and we break it down, it's fairly substantial, quite a bit going on. More positive projects to talk about than a pandemic, which is, I think, exciting for both the community as well as administration and happy to take any questions that council may have.
Any questions?
Councillor Lake. Thanks, your worship. It is a pretty impressive list. Again, I like, I recognize how small our, in particular, senior leadership team is. So my hat goes off for all those balls being juggled in the air. I do have a question about a couple of them. The first one is around the golf course, just because I think that's probably the first one that's going to be done. We, the shell is up and you're doing your operational plan. Again, I just think as council, we've said a couple of times, just making sure we talk to both user groups so that whatever design goes into that interior meets the needs of those groups so that it's a lot easier to have that conversation before the interior is done than after. So I'm just, I know you guys are in contact, so just reminding about that. And then the other thing is, all through last summer, when I think about that Cummings Beach landing, there were people from all over Canada parking down there. And I just think it is such a beautiful piece of property. Long term, are there regulations against us expanding our camping program to have sites down there? Because people are camping there anyway. So it'd be nice to capitalize on something that's already happening. Right now, they're just squatting basically. Is that something that we can look at in the future?
Yeah. So, so just to touch base on the question and the comment. So yeah, absolutely. Now that I think, you know, we have a really good sense of what the clubhouse looks like, you know, it's always, you know, it's one thing to be on paper. It's another thing to be 3D and actually walk through it. You know, we see it now. So certainly, you know, we'll have those discussions, you know, with definitely with the cross-country ski club around functionality moving forward. But around the camping piece, this is something we'll definitely look at as both part of the longer-term waterfront development plan, as well as we've discussed it previously with the Pebble Beach Development Area and looking at, you know, areas down there where we could host camping in some form or style. So yes, definitely, you know, and I think if, you know, the interests we've seen in Penlake to date this year is any indication, these will be very popular spots going forward and certainly areas for us to take advantage of. So absolutely, we'll consider that moving forward in our longer-term planning.
Thanks for that. And just to comment on that, councillor Lake, as you know, with Pebbles and Cummings area, we could have rustic camping and still utilize our Penlake Park for the cleanouts of those individual traders. So we can utilize a lot of spaces in town and still have the main spot as the Penlake for cleanout and utilizing stuff. So it could all work for sure. Councillor Jingra.
Yes, I just had a quick question on, on the boat launch property as well. So this winter, we plowed that road and let people access it all winter. I'm wondering if that's something we could be looking at to continue or if that was, if that was just a one-year thing because of COVID, right?
No, it wasn't. It's not going to be a one-year thing. It was a bit of a one-off in that. We were doing some training down there at that time and people utilized it. But no, we do plan to do that on a yearly basis going forward in the winters.
Thank you. And it goes well, it was well-used whenever I was down there anyways.
Thanks, councillor Lake. You had another one?
Yeah, I did, actually. So when I think about, oh man, I lost my train of thought, your worship. I guess, come back to me.
Go back. Go to councillor Dubushi.
Yeah, I was looking over the, as much as you can, the Green and Inclusive Community Program that was announced there. Are we incorporating now in our, our new design or our new look of utilizing? Because one of the criteria was it had to be, I'll say, eco-friendly or at least have components of that. So because we had access to solar panels on our other facilities, will that be incorporated into it? Will, I'll say, our heat recovery program where we steal heat from the pool to cool the ice, those kinds of issues? I know that's the wave of, I'll say, future ice plants and facility operations. So was that incorporated in the original plan or is that now going to be relooked at because of the green portion of the announcement that was made?
No, our, our building would be ready to go. I have no question. It would meet the criteria. It was designed under the LEED building standards, L-E-E-D. It escapes me on the actual terminology for what that means. But, you know, things like heat recovery is certainly built in, south-facing windows, where we see a majority of our sun in Marathon, so that we're, you know, less heating and cooling within the building. So all of those functionalities have already been built into the new design. So I would have no doubt that we'd be ready to meet those requirements to go to construction.
Good, thanks. Councillor Lake, you found that question?
I did. I guess that shows my age a little bit and the question. The question will also show my age a little bit. Like, when we talk about, certainly, you know, it's so nice to talk about expansion as opposed to contraction. And we talk about housing divisions and, 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 and sort of, you know, infilling. I just, that lesson learned from, I know you lived through that political debacle of the 90s where we ended up, you know, almost insolvent because we did all this building but didn't do it kind of properly. So I just, whenever I hear building, I'm, what's the assurance that, again, in a boom and bust kind of municipality, that we don't, you know, overbuild, overreach? Did we learn the lessons from the last mine expansion? I guess I just want to throw that out there as one of our guiding principles so that we don't get ourselves in the same jackpot.
Certainly. And I think you look at the past and you definitely learn from the past. And I think this council will take that information going forward. You know, you, you want to have an expansion, you want to have the expansion done right. And as councillor, Mr. Skorchinsky identified, whether it's, you know, 150, 150 that we might be looking at through an expansion, it's going to be signed, sealed and delivered from the developer purchaser before we make any moves. So as we talked about the previous incident around the peninsula, where projects going forward, we're going to be signed, sealed and delivered and there will be iron clad with all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted before we give the final approval from least this council. And hopefully, that administration team will take that into any new future council coming forward to make sure that our community never, never gets caught up in a situation like that or any other thing in regards to the 80s boom, where we had literally agreements with governments that weren't signed and agreements with, you know, developers that weren't signed and things built with no funding. You can't do that stuff. You have to have it spelled out, no different than Mr. Skorchinsky has identified with the Active Living Centre or the Public Works Garage. We're going to have a detailed plan in place with an operating budget, you know, over 25 years or 30 years, wherever that looks like, we'll know going in whether or not this council or future council can identify and spend that money appropriately. So the repairs of our community don't get overwhelmed with taxation.
I think the other thing, your worship, just to finish off the question is, you know, the one thing that didn't exist back then that does exist now is the utilization of technology. You know, so the ability for utilized, for us to utilize our GIS systems, you know, tie those to financing strategies, you know, we're able to pre-plan in a very proactive and detailed fashion long before a development happens on paper. So that gives us a lot of confidence when we bring things forward to council.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, nothing else on the current projects update? I see no other hands. Thank you for that. Going to some of the administration reports, report on the corporal social media guidance, copy to all members. And Andrew's going to give us an update on that.
Good afternoon, your worship, members of council. The town of Marathon is committed to openness and transparency and strives to provide open access to information about its policies, guidelines, programs, services and initiatives. The purpose of revising the corporate social media guideline is to enhance two-way communication with the community. This guideline establishes procedures and standards for the acceptable use of town social media sites, as well as for town staff participating in external online social media sites when it relates to discussing, sharing and commenting on town business. This guideline applies to, applies to all staff, members of council and firefighters discussing town business on town social media sites, as well as any external non-town online media sites. Training and review of this guideline will be provided to all staff. There's no financial implications to this guideline and this report is presented for council's information only.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Andrea on that updated policy? Councillor Lake.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So the place that certainly, I think, the social media policies usually cause friction is, for example, you know, I'm a teacher at, at the school board. And if I want to make a comment about what's going on in education and I make a comment, my employer can kind of slap my wrist and say, you know, you can't, you can't speak about that in social media. So is that the same for, and I know you mentioned firefighters, but anybody who is employed by the town, they are then in a relationship where they have a way to discuss issues with the town. So you don't make it on Facebook. You don't make comments on Twitter. You're going to go through your chain of command. That's my understanding of when I read through the policy, right? Like, as a councillor, I'm, it says I'm responsible for my own social media site. And I recognize that anything I type into social media is fair game. But that actually is true for anybody employed with the municipality, right?
Yes, that's correct. So prior to this guideline, we, we always had the employee code of conduct for staff as well as council. So we have regularly informed the staff at staff meetings, as well as other forms of communication regarding the social media piece. We've just added it to the, to the social media guideline to even just make it a little even more clear.
Thank you. And so all the employees have been informed and they kind of.
Yeah, so we, like I said, it strictly does speak about this in the employee code of conduct, which is distributed to all staff. And like, we do at least talk about the code of conduct at least once a year at one of our staff meetings. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Debushi?
Yeah, obviously with the changing dynamics of social media on a regular basis. I mean, one of our policies was we review policies on a, I mean, we, there are some policies we hadn't reviewed for like five years. What's the timeline on reviewing this policy? Because things change so rapidly in social media. So that's the first question. The other question is, I didn't see it listed here. Will that also pertain to people or our employees or whoever is covered under this policy who like or retweet, I'll say, what could be deemed as offensive messaging? Wasn't their own comment by them, but by them retweeting or liking it and moving it forward? Is that, are they subject to the same kind of discipline under this policy?
Well, the guideline will be reviewed every year, as well as, no, we strongly discourage employees for even liking a comment. It's just, it's just best not to, just not to say anything or any comment, any like, any sharing on anything that regarding the town.
Thanks, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to follow up on the first question and with respect to, you know, employees of the corporation. And really, you know, they have direct access every day to ask questions, be it through a manager, be it through the CAO, be it through a supervisor. You know, so there's no need to take to social media with respect to derogatory or negative comments. So I just wanted to reinforce that. Of course, that opportunity exists every day they come to work.
Yes, thanks. Andrew, Ms. Goach, are you done with your presentation?
Other questions, yes.
Okay, no other question. I don't see any. No, thank you for that. And yeah, it's the sign of the times. We just encourage everybody to think before they type. And that would get you in a lot less, a lot less trouble potentially. Because if you think about it, you might not do it. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have a report on Penn Lake Trail Decorations Guideline, Ms. Goodchild.
Good afternoon, your worship, members of council. The Town of Marathon is aware of the differing opinions relating to the addition of decorations to the Penn Lake Trail. While the addition of items in the trail has added a sense of wonder for residents and visitors, maintaining a natural environment and the true integrity of the trail is the town's main objective. The addition of decorations and non-native materials also raise concerns about possible risks to wildlife, the environment, and waterways. To ensure the natural integrity of the trail is maintained and to be consistent with decoration requests for the Penn Lake Trail, administration has developed a guideline. The rules set forth in this guideline will provide clear direction on the acceptable decorations, materials, and process for residents who wish to add their decorations to the trail. Decorations must be made of raw natural materials. Plastics, metals, glass, et cetera, will not be allowed. Decorations must be pre-approved by the Community Services Department by submitting requests via the town website. Items will be reviewed and a response provided within 14 days. Decorations that have not been pre-approved or that have been denied will be removed from the trail and disposed of. For decorations that are currently in the trail, the Town of Marathon will provide ample time for residents to retrieve them via public notice. Residents can request that they be put back in the trail via our online submission process. These changes to the trail decoration process, as well as the guideline, will be shared on our social media pages and municipal website. Administration is presenting this report for information purposes only.
Thanks for that, Ms. Goodchild. Does anybody have any questions about guideline policies? Counselor Jingra.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So I know one of the, like, the library puts out their book on the trail regularly. And there is technically, it's paper, but I think, I know they often laminate it. So would that now be unable, would they still be able to put that up?
So we, we don't want to discourage people from having, like, active participation and utilizing our facilities. We just have to have two-way communication for those kinds of things. So that's something that we could set up with other organizations such as the library. But we need to be aware of it so that, that way we can track what is in there, if it is the libraries or not the libraries, and making sure that it is cleaned up after and none of it ends up in the lake or in the bush.
Good, thanks. Counselor Lake?
Thanks, your worship. So it's funny, I guess I hadn't thought there would be differing opinions. Because, I mean, I love the stuff that's around the lake. It seems kind of whimsical. But when I read the report, it actually makes some sense to me that there is, you know, glass and plastics and things that are probably bad for the, for the environment. So, you know, when I first read it, I was like, oh, my goodness, we're just overreaching what, we don't need to govern this kind of thing. But it does make some sense to me in terms of some of that ecological stuff. But what I do think about is, you know, having it be as easy on residents as possible. I mean, I think all the stuff that certainly I see that's out there is in kind of a really nice spirit, right? Lots of stuff made by kids. I see lots with names of kids on it. I just, I really like that. Could it be as simple as just, you know, they take a picture of what they want to put on the trail, send it to Community Services, and then it's a yes or a no? Like, I just, I'd hate to see a, a long process, especially if it's, you know, being made by kids or their parents. So I just don't know, just trying to make that as easy as possible for people.
For sure, yeah. So through our website, it's actually very user-friendly. You can take a picture with your phone, upload it, attach your name and phone number. And that way, if we have any further questions on, is that piece plastic or is it wood? We can't really tell in the photo. We can get in contact with the person submitting it and then let them know, yeah, it's good to go. You can go place it in there or if there's further follow-up or if we have concerns about it.
And will it be designated areas only or can they sort of put it wherever they want on the trail?
We're going to lean towards letting people pick where it goes. If that turns out that it doesn't work that way, we may need to go back and revisit it. But it seems so far people are pretty respectful in there as it is, so.
Good. Mr. Skorchinsky?
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to take this opportunity to highlight that this was part of our discussion that you and I had with Mrs. Skorchinsky's class at Margaret Tumi Public School. And they felt that decoration should also be made of natural materials, which benefits the trail and obviously the decorum of the park as well. So just wanted to thank the students for their input. And they can see that some of what they provided is going into a real-life guideline and we'll certainly share that with the class.
Absolutely. They were also going to work on some signage and stuff, weren't they, as well, as a project?
Ms. Goodchild's working, we're working with the class on a cleanup and some signage in the spring timeframe.
Great, thanks. Counselor Debushi?
Yeah, the only thing I had noticed or lack of notice was the fact that there was no timeline sent for or set for how long these things could be out for display. And I'm a little concerned that through the course of time, you'll get a cumulative effect where there'll be multiple or even, I'll say, too many little decorations out there or they become weatherborne or whatever, weather-beaten. Should we discuss or consider that there's the timeline on how long these decorations could be out? Because, you know, it's fine identity when there's five or six out there at big intervals or intervals. But over the course of time, if we don't have something set in place, it could accumulate, you know, to a point where it's, you know, I'll say the gnomes at, you know, the truck stop there or the, along the highway. So I just wanted to ask about that.
So, yeah, right now we didn't put a timeline on it. It is a guideline. So we are able to review it as often as we want and make changes to it. So if we do feel that people are getting a little carried away, we also, with people having to submit the items, we'll have, we'll be able to keep track of whose items are in there and whose items belong to who. So if something becomes damaged or we feel that something is no longer able to stay in there, for whatever reason, we are able to contact those people.
Good, thanks. Before I go to Counselor Valance, I walk the trail quite regularly and, you know, with myself, my wife, my grandkids. We all love every bit of the trail. The only thing we don't love, obviously, is the thing we're trying to correct, is the plastics, the decorations that are plastic or of, you know, materials that are not of nature. I don't care if there's 500 pieces in there because they all look really cool and tacked to the tree and a little doorway going into a mossy area. It's all really nice, interesting stuff. Just eliminating the plastics. And you're absolutely right. If we see some deterioration of those products, you just contact the provider or the owner and ask them to remove it or our staff removes it at a certain time. Counselor Valance?
Thank you, your worship. More so a comment than a question. When we look at signage, is there any potential for when we want to maintain a one-way traffic flow for the trail? Can we get signage potentially out in the parking lot that states it's a one-way? I know there is signage closer to like the campground play area that states it's a one-way. But by the time you make the walk all the way around the lake to start the trail, you've already, you could potentially miss that it's a one-way. And then one thing too is just regarding dog waste. I was up there yesterday actually walking the trail. There's quite a bit of dog waste there. So just to remind the constituents to be mindful of picking up their dog remnants.
Do you want to respond to that, Ms. Goodchild?
Yeah, so the one-way started more or less because of COVID. We were trying to reduce people walking into each other on the trail. So if we want to keep it a one-way trail, if that's something you would like to see done, we can definitely get some actual signage instead of the little ones we did up here in the office.
Yeah, I'll pull counts on that. I think it was due to COVID, absolutely. But I think it's two-way, either way, it doesn't matter because it's about just enjoying nature. It's good to walk one way one time and one way the other. It's a whole different trail when you walk the opposite way. So once we get through COVID, I think we just go back, take those signs down, let people go freely. But I certainly appreciate Counselor Valance's comment about the dog poo because there's a lot. I was going to say something else, but it's not appropriate. Counselor Jingra?
Just to comment on, or an idea, I guess, on the, on the dog waste. There's lots of parks in different areas that have, they'll have a post with a small garbage bin and dog waste bags available. So that might just be a way to help, help people do that. I don't know what the cost of them are, but might be something to look into to help with that issue.
Yeah, we can definitely look into it.
Good idea. And that would be nice to post on each side of the entrance of the trail. Just to, you know, have a doggy poo bag there available so the residents can pick it up. Because they think it's in the bush, but the reality is it's a trail and it's a part of nature. But we all walk it and enjoy it. So it's not pleasant to be running into the waste of our before-legged buddies. Okay, so no other questions I don't see. Thank you for that update. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have a report on policy AD 0031, Use of Corporate Resources. Ms. Lees, please.
Thank you, your worship. Section 88.18 of the Municipal Elections Act requires municipalities and local boards before May 1 of an election year to establish rules and procedures with respect to the use of municipal or local board resources during the election campaign period. Policy number AD 0031 outlines the use of corporate resources, including but not limited to staff, website, municipal logo, and municipal information technology that sitting council members are prohibited from using during their campaign. This policy also covers registered third parties, contributions, and by-elections. There are no financial implications. The options are to accept the policy as presented or to accept the policy but with amendments. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that policy AD 0031, Use of Corporate Resources During Election, be approved as presented.
Thank you for that important update. And I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation on policy AD 0031, Use of Corporate Resources During Election, and that policy number AD 0031, Use of Corporate Resources During Election Be Approved As Presented and for that a copy of this policy be placed in the town's policy guideline manual. Move by.
Counselor Valance?
Counselor Jingra.
Thank you. Okay, questions? Counselor Debushi?
Yeah, just for note, even though the election is a year and a bit away, this will be valid, I guess, because the March 1 deadline is first, is required before March, or May 1, sorry, 2022.
Correct.
Yeah, so we just needed to have a policy in place. There's no timeframe by which it.
Correct. Yeah, we're actually early, but that's, yeah, we're early.
We're right on top of it. Thank you very much, Ms. Lees, because that's good. Gets it out of the way.
Yes.
I don't see any other questions. It's more of a formality and a policy update in regards to the elections process for '22. Thanks for that. Call the question all in favor?
Yes.
Counselor Debushi, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. All in favor, Carrie? Okay, up next, I have a motion on the approval of the following check runs in the council payroll of $858,094.95 and payroll in the amount of $136,873.58. Move by.
Counselor Debushi?
Counselor Jingra.
I got Counselor Valance. Thank you very much. Any questions on those paycheck runs for council people or council payroll? Hearing none? All question all in favor?
Yes.
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 Carrie? Okay, Counselor Lake, you have a little update on DSAB things?
Thank you, worship. So DSAB met last Thursday for our monthly meeting. It was a good update. The one thing that did come to light that I think is important for the municipality would be, so DSAB has already run two programs for emergency COVID relief. And I know some of the organizations in Marathon have already taken advantage of that. I know the Collective did, I think Marjorie House, I think Peninsula Manor. So the government has come forward with another significant pot of money to run those programs again. I know Thunder Bay Police, for example, have just applied to do wellness checks. They got some money for that. So there is money available for organizations who are affected by COVID or want to run programs related to COVID. So, I mean, we've been successful in the municipality, so just encouraging folks to apply to that program. I think it's called the SSRF, but it's through DSAB. So, and also, they made it clear that even if organizations had previously been successful in applying for money, they could apply again. So just trying to get that out into the public, that there is some money available for organizations.
Good, thanks. Anybody have any questions at Counsel Lake on that? Awesome. So we can encourage everybody, if there's opportunities, to get your name into DSAB. And the information could be easy, because some people don't know how to deal with DSAB through the town. I would imagine it would be easiest to go through our deputy clerk, Ms. Lees, to get that information for the DSAB application process. Would you recommend that?
Yeah, that's certainly appropriate.
Just because DSAB, a lot of people don't understand, is District Social Service Administration Board and the process of funding and asking for funds from them. So just if they're looking for information. Thanks. Thanks for that, Counselor Lake. Under new business requests have been received from a local resident in regards to raising the pride flag. So the motion is that council hereby supports the raising of the pride flag for the town office and for that administration be directed to follow past practice and the town's flag use policy when assisting in arranging flag-raising ceremony. And this was submitted by Barb McGill, and they're looking for the flag to be raised in the month of June. And I don't know under the policy if it's for the whole month, but we'll get into that once we get the motion on the floor. So I need a moment or a second there.
Counselor?
I got Counselor Valance, Counselor Jingra. So Mr. Skorchinsky or Ms. Lees, in the policy, is it all month they can do it or just a day?
It's at the discretion of council. Traditionally, we haven't done anything for a period of a month. It's generally a day or at the longest, a week. But it's at council's discretion.
So with that said, because there is a policy, so do we discuss it, council? Or do we let administration guide that length of time? Comments? Counselor Lake?
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to let administration work it out. I think it's a great flag to raise. And it does raise some other questions, too. There's lots of flags, when I think about it, that I'm surprised we don't raise. Like, it'd be interesting to talk to Bitigon and Nenamisakamik about raising their flags on National Aboriginal Day. Those are on, in June as well. And so I do wonder about if you had a flag up for the whole month, whether it would preclude being able to do other things during the month. Uh, I don't know enough flag protocol to know if you can have two flags on the same, uh, staff, you know what I mean? So I would leave it to administration, to me to sort of clarify some of those answers.
Okay. So I'm going to go to Counsel Valance. Well, with that very comment being made, it's June, uh, the twenty-first is usually Aboriginal Day. So that's a good point. So my opinion would be, and council can have debate or discussion. I think a week would be the max. You'd want to let somebody fly a flag. So you can easily have, uh, other opportunities. And with that being, uh, said, if, if the Aboriginal community wanted to, uh, us fly a flag for them, it would be a week of the June twenty-first era and the pride would be a week earlier or sometime in June, just recognizing that. So I'll go to Counselor Valance, then back to you, Counsel Lake, if you want to have more discussion.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah. And I, uh, want to just reiterate exactly what Counselor Lake said. Depending on how, um, you can work flags with each other and if it's appropriate and stuff like that, I would be totally okay with seeing it for the month or seeing it for a week. I just fully support, um, the flag and the representation being, uh, flown by our municipality. And I'd like to see also municipalities along the North Shore kind of follow suit. So I think we'll be setting the tone and I think we'll be doing some positives. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Lake, you want to come back with a question or a comment?
Uh, no, I'm with, uh, Counsel Valance. I think, uh, you know, if it's for a week or a month, um, uh, just flying it is the big deal. Uh, but also just thinking about ways that we could, you know, it's another one of those, uh, public displays of what we value. So how do we encourage other groups to, uh, you know, come forward and, and, and want to have their flags flown as well?
Certainly. Counselor DeBushi.
Uh, yeah, just for, uh, information, I believe, uh, the Toronto, uh, parade is June twenty-seventh. So if we are picking dates, we should probably pick it around that time. If it doesn't interfere with the, uh, Aboriginal days, if they are interested in those things. But, uh, just says note, uh, instead of, uh, to kind of center it around that occasion, I guess. Cause that's when it's mostly in people's mind, either for good or for bad reasons.
Okay. Counselor Jingra.
Yeah, just a comment. So when we fly the Franco Ontario flag, there's always a, I shouldn't say always, because there wasn't during COVID, but there's usually a small celebration of a, of a flag raising that we do with the, the two French schools here. And I believe and, and Counselor Lake would know better than I, but I believe the high school has an LGBTQ club. So it might be nice to, to have them come and do some kind of flag raising ceremony instead of just us putting it up and, and that's it.
Yeah, good point. And, uh, I think we'll leave that to the, the request of the individual Barb McGill for that, uh, comment. And she can direct what she feels might be appropriate, whether it's some members from the community or herself or whatever. So working with administration and, and council. So Counsel, uh, Ms. Gorchinsky has his hand up.
Uh, yes, Your Worship. Just, uh, I, I would like one clarification from council, but before we leave this topic. And that is, um, I, I don't think it's appropriate for administration, uh, to look at flying, um, you know, this, you know, different flags on the same pole. Uh, we certainly don't allow it for our Canadian or Ontario flags. Um, and I think that's, uh, it can be a difficult conversation to have with different groups. So what I would suggest to council is, you know, we've already heard that there's differing events possibly taking place in the same month that we just standardize it's, you know, it's a week long, um, and then the flag comes down.
Absolutely. And I think that's a good, uh, it's a good segue into this finalization of this, uh, resolution that we put in there in our flagging policy as well, that no longer than a week, the flag shall, shall fly. And if a group wants a day, that's great. If that group, the Franco, uh, Ontarians, for example, want to go more than the one day of September twenty-fifth, they can go the week. So we could have that for sure. And I think that's appropriate to put into the, uh, policy for the, uh, flag raising. Everybody's good with that? Sounds like it. Okay. With that being said, I'll call the question all in favor. We'll have administration then incorporate then the policy for the flag raising.
Yes.
Tabushi, yes. Yep.
Well, Carrie, thank you very much. And we'll get back in touch with, uh, Barb McGill and get that information for, to her. Thanks. Okay. Up next we have a, uh, request that been received from the township of Brock, seeking, uh, their support, uh, our support, sorry, and pertaining to cannabis licensing and enforcement. Uh, I need to move her a second to put this motion on the floor.
Counselor Tabushi.
Yep.
Counselor Valance.
Okay. I got Counselor Lake first. Thank you. Okay. So what they're asking for is more, uh, identification and enforcement around licensing and having license in, uh, with designated growers to conform to local zoning and control bylaws. And I thought most of us would have that, but it sounds like maybe not. And, uh, in regards to growers as sellers as well. And we're going to be, uh, I think coming in the near future, having a seller in our community. So I don't know if it pertains to that as well with not only growing and selling. So I, I'll open up for any comments or questions in regards to this, uh, supported resolution. Counselor DeBushi.
Uh, yeah, I attended, uh, a couple, um, zoning and, and issues pertaining to cannabis. And the most of the issues in that area is with the growers and the growers are say licensed for a hundred plants. But it, there, there's nobody to enforce that they have a thousand plants. And I think that's what they're pertaining to. They fall within the guidelines of either agriculture or whatnot, but there's nobody to enforce and to actually go on site to ensure that they're not exceeding their limits. And by exceeding the limits, what they do is they have a drain on the water, uh, the water table, the electrical grid and all those things. Because it's, it's not grown out in the fields like most other plants because it's a controlled or licensed establishment. They're all basically almost hydroponic situations. And that's the issue there is. So I can support this on the fact that even though they meet the guidelines through zoning and whatnot, there's nobody to enforce that they're actually adhering to what they can grow or, or their licenses. So I can support that portion. If it's a matter of saying that you don't want it in my backyard, I can't support it. And I didn't read that in there, but I got the gist that that's what they wanted, authority to say yes or no. Because this is a legitimate licensed business. And if it falls within the zoning practices or, and your official plan, y- y- you know, that's where I have some issue with this policy and unless I read it wrong.
Yeah. So number, so before I go to Mr. Gorchinsky, number two, ensure that local authorities are provided with notification of any license issuance, amendment, suspension, reinstatement or revocation within the region. So a grower and has been already been identified in the documented grower has grown more than what they were specified to grow. And they were penalized by Health Canada and they were subs- substantially reduced in their licensing and, and selling ability. So really affected the company's operations for, like anything, it was a suspension of, uh, operations until they, they rectified the situation. So Mr. Gorchinsky.
Yeah. So this is really, uh, boils down to ultimately a communication issue. So, um, and I'll separate out the difference between, uh, the provincial authorities and the federal authorities. So when somebody makes application through the AGCO in Ontario, we get notification of that as well as the appeal period and any appeals, uh, with respect to the establishment of those businesses in our community. Uh, with this item, um, it hel- it's Health Canada's responsibility to notify the local municipality and that isn't happening. Um, so there's gaps being created. So what they're asking for is when these licenses are issued, that the host municipality gets notice of them. So they can undertake the appropriate bylaw work as well as determine if there's any infrastructure requirements.
Uh, uh, and you know, a, a comment follow-up and it's funny thing is if you're talking about a grower growing substantial amounts of plants in your community, you think the Health Canada would notify the community saying, we've approved licensing for ABC company to grow five thousand marijuana plants in your community, but yet they don't. So, yeah, good point. Okay. With a move or a second, it's permission. I'll call a question all in favor.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, yes.
Okay. Against? Okay, Carrie. Thank you. Up next we have a report, uh, uh, council hereby supports the attached resolution, sorry, from a city, sorry, pertaining to COVID nineteen color-coded capacity limits. I need to move her a second to put that on the floor.
Counselor Valance.
Okay, Counselor Valance, Counselor Lake. And basically what they're asking for is, uh, capacity increases in the color codes that are provided by the Ontario government for businesses, uh, to provide service for their individuals in communities under different, uh, rulings of, uh, the color codes. So the red zone currently allows ten people indoors and dining or sporting recreations regardless of size. Places of worship are capped at thirty percent of fifty people and retail or small businesses are limited to fifty percent capacity. These individuals or organizations should be in a course, uh, imp- impacted because of the COVID color code. So they're, they're asking for this to be, uh, to change to, uh, different color codes and different, uh, different capacity limits so that the sporting recreational facilities, dining places, place of worship, event centers and all retail, small business as part of the color coding system could be more in tune to the space they have. Mr., uh, Counselor Tabushi.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to make sure that, that that was the issue. Cause we had a resolution we supported before that said it should be based on capacity or square footage, not on an arbitrary number. I mean, I could see in a spot where, you know, you had room for four dining tables that, you know, the ten or the ten limit would be in excess. So is that what they're asking again for is that be based on square footage? And not just an arbitrary number? Cause if that's the case, I can support it. If it's just that they want to do with an arbitrary number or whatever, then, then we, we really need to discuss that.
Well, so the, the rationale for the providing of the introduction of this motion was the fact that in current red zone currently allows only ten people indoors and dining or sporting recreational facilities regardless of the size. They want to have that size increased based on the square footage. You're right. They want to have it based on the size of the facility rather than only ten people indoors under the red zone lockdown, which we're all been in for, or could be in for a while. So most of the vaccines are install, uh, uh, poked in our arms. Counselor Lake.
Uh, yeah, that, that's how I read that last line too, that it says, uh, um, the amount, the facility which ensures strictness, social, s- social distance, it should be about the amount of people the facility can hold. It's, it's essentially without saying square footage, the same, uh, thing we passed last council meeting. So I, I would support it wholeheartedly again.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Valance.
I guess my one comment would be, Your Worship, I would support it because it will at least give those individuals or those organizations within certain sectors a chance to, um, at least make a little bit of revenue. I asked at the health, uh, unit meeting board, your, part of directors meeting this month, actually, if there was any opportunity for them to revise the dine wise and the body wise program that they currently, um, facilitate, that's for the restaurants and for the estheticians and hairdressing. And was informed that through the framework that they have currently rolled out, they're unable to add additional modules or precautions COVID related to help these organizations. So with that being said, I do support this motion.
Yeah, thanks. And it's, it's unusual that they, they make comment that they have no mechanisms. Cause the mechanisms are being created by governance models. So the governance model can change the mechanisms within the allow to, to operate within each zone of the color code. And of course we're in a gray lockdown. So there are some, some opportunities to go into, to retail outlets, but they're minute, they're limited and, and minimalized. So we go into red, it opens up more doors. So we just got to get less people, uh, getting COVID nineteen and more vaccines out. And I think it'll just be a matter of time. So over the next three weeks, month, we, we should see a lot of different things happening in our region and hopefully in our province and our country. And, uh, and we can have some, some openness in regards to our, our business community. And those businesses can, can start to hopefully recover, uh, if they are not going to be permanently shut down. So no other hands up? Thank you very much. I'll call the question all in favor.
Yes.
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 Carrie, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So Counselor Valance, uh, would have a little bit of a, uh, announcement with the library board as well.
Yeah, with spring being in the air, the Marathon Public Library has a spring selfie challenge. With that being said, the Marathon Public Library is looking for, uh, members of the general public to take selfies, complete the list, email all your photos to, uh, their email, uh, for your chance to win a prize. So enjoy the sun, warm weather and take a break from indoors. Get outside and show us your funniest, goofiest and happiest faces. So for more information, uh, individuals can either call the library at eight oh seven two two nine zero seven four oh, or take a look at their, uh, Facebook page, Marathon Public Library, and you'll get all the information regarding the challenge there.
Thank you for the information. Does it have to be a funny goofy face? Could we just go out and enjoy the outdoors and take a selfie and send it in?
I'm sure they will accept any selfies. So anything you want, just make sure you submit it and complete the challenge. And, uh, there's a few different checkpoints from my understanding. So you got to hit the different locations.
Okay. Awesome. Great. So it's kind of a little scavenger hunt selfie, uh, submission. Perfect.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, uh, on this agenda for today? I have nothing. So thank you all.
No, actually, Your Worship, you missed the fire chief, um.
Yes, I did. I'm sorry. Yes. Uh, Mr. Gorchinsky, uh, is going to give us no view of the, uh, fire safety grant program.
Uh, thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, just, uh, quickly for council. It's not, uh, an approval item, uh, but council was referenced uh, in the information package. So, uh, this is through the office of, uh, the fire marshal, the ministry of the solicitor general. Uh, there's a, a program supporting, uh, our frontline first responders. Um, and in Marathon's case, we're receiving five thousand four hundred dollars to support our firefighters uh, with ongoing training needs, um, or technology upgrades. So those will be, uh, well utilized locally, uh, to further train, uh, our first responders. And it's just, uh, an information item for council, uh, and thanks to the province for providing the additional training dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, uh, I didn't, I missed that one. Okay. So with that being said, I do have a motion here to adjourn at the hour of five oh five PM. Thank you very much. Need to move her a second for that?
Counselor Valance.
Valance and Jingra, thank you very much. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Good worship.
Good night, everybody.